I would like to call the board of the emergency meeting for October the 1st, 2020. And I ask the clerk, please call the room.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster? Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Mullins? Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Now, we do have a current president, so at this time, was somebody saying something? I missed it.
I don't think so.
Okay. So at this time, we do have a current president, and I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to Mr. Griffin, who has to the meeting.
I, um, thank you, Mayor. I've, I've shared with y'all some photographs yesterday and, um, also shared those with Mr. Jordan and, uh, in talking through the situation with Mr. Jordan, um, he felt like we should, uh, meet and, uh, look at, uh, a permanent easement for conveyance of this property if we were gonna, um, uh, be able to assist this situation. Throughout the day-to-day, I have sent you information, um, showing the potential easement, um, as, as able to be drawn from, from, um, uh, public records off of the tax assessor's website. I also sent you a, um, plat of, um, the Cordsbridge area, um, showing the actual lot 37 on Coventry Court, uh, which is, uh, the lot in question, um, and also the project price list of, um, that Mr. Thomas put together to, and I think he's, I think Mr. Thomas is joining us now, so hold on just a minute, um, that Mr. Thomas put together to, um, give us a price estimate on, uh, replacement of the pipe with, uh, the homeowner being responsible for, uh, the concrete repair. Um, she was already planning to do some concrete work anyway. That's kind of what started this process when the contractor that she was talking with was leaving her property. And, um, uh, you may not have been able to tell it from the plat, but there's a very, very small piece of this drainage system that is in the right-of-way, but the majority of it is not. And then talking to Mr. Jordan this morning, uh, we were in agreement that, uh, we really need to have an easement, uh, conveying this area to the city if we were gonna make this repair. So, uh, that's what we are here for now. Um, Mr. Jordan, uh, if you'll give them information on, uh, what the resolution says and what that means.
Uh, the, the resolution is very, very simple and straightforward. It simply authorizes, uh, the mayor on behalf of the city to accept an easement, um, for drainage, for repair and maintenance of, uh, drainage and stormwater infrastructure across this particular area. Uh, we have not actually drawn the easement, uh, yet, but we will get that done. We will need a, actually, we'll need a temporary construction easement and a permanent easement. But as I understand, this, this particular piping and its location and where, uh, it is servicing or where water is feeding into this is basically our stormwater. And, um, I think going forward in this situation, for us to be able to maintain it, to be able to, uh, repairs, uh, that the city will need this, will need this drainage, uh, in place in order for us to, to do it and do it, uh, in compliance with, uh, with the law and our, and our codes. So that's basically it.
And as Mr. Jordan said, this is part of the, of the, uh, this, this particular area is not necessarily part, but, uh, there's a 20-foot drainage easement that, um, feeds into this area from, from one side of the subdivision to, um, another. And, uh, so the water does ultimately, uh, pass through, uh, this area, and that drainage easement is shown on the plat that I sent you all this morning, that, um, I think Tim actually got from Tina, didn't you, Tim? Uh, she got it from, uh, clerk of court, I'm quite sure, um, because it's a registered plat. So, um, Tim, you want to add anything to, to what I've said or what Mr. Jordan has said in terms of, of potential repair?
Uh, no, so you all pretty much have covered everything. We have, uh, a right-of-way that's 120 feet, uh, at the cul-de-sac, which actually overlaps the, uh, the 20-foot easement for the drainage. So you all pretty much have covered everything.
Okay. Uh, with that, Mayor, I'll take any questions if anybody has any or, or try to, uh, take care of any clarifications if any are needed.
Is there any discussion on this?
Well, by us doing an easement, that means that we're doing it, we'll be doing it on our own because we can't do it on a person's private, can't go on their private land. But by them, has she agreed to or they agreed to, uh, letting it be an easement?
They have not specifically agreed to, uh, to the easement, Ms. Walden, but, uh, based on my conversation with her yesterday, uh, I don't anticipate that that's gonna be an issue for them. But from a legality standpoint, I believe you're right. Jimmy, stop me if I'm speaking out of turn, but that would be the purpose of the easement, so that it would then be, um, property that we could-
That we were working on our own property, right?
-work on within our ordinances. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, because we can't go on a person's private property.
Right. And Ms. Walden, if they, if, obviously, if, if they don't want to provide us with the easement, then, you know, that repair will be their-
Their burden.
-full responsibility. They'll, they'll have to address it.
Yeah.
That's the only, this is the only way that we can do it.
Can help them.
As you have pointed out.
Okay.
Is there something going on? Everybody's voices are sounding distorted.
We can hear you well, Ms. Shinholster.
We can hear you well, and we can hear each other well on this end.
That's me, the Board of Education.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't know what's going on, and I didn't hardly hear any of that conversation, but I caught most of it, so it was just really distorted.
Ms. Shinholster, Ms., uh, Ms. Walden, if you caught some of it, she was just basically talking about, um, the personal property and not being able to go on it, and that's what the easement is for, I think that's, did you get that part of it?
I did. I heard that part of it.
Okay.
I, um, yeah, that, yeah, I mean, and I know that's what, that's how we have to operate. I heard, also heard Hank say that they had necessarily approved of or agreed with getting the easement just yet. So how, how will we proceed? We have to wait for them to approve, right? Or to agree?
Yes, I would, I would-
They disagree.
Can you hear me, Ms. Shinholster?
I can. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we would go ahead and draft the, uh, easement, uh, based on some precise measurements that, uh, Mr. Thomas will put together for us, and we will, we will plat that easement and, and as well. But we will draw it up, and then Hank and Mr. Thomas or whoever will present it to the property owner to, for them to execute it if they so choose, or to take it to someone, take it to a lawyer to look at. Um, like I said, they are, uh, as I understand it, they are the, they are, they are wanting this done. They're obviously looking to the city because it is our stormwater that, uh, apparently has created this situation. So, and again, as Ms. Walden said, in order for us to do this work, uh, and that become a part of our stormwater system, we will have to have that easement.
Okay. Dr. Lee, were you trying to chime in on, to say something?
Yes. I have a question, and I need a clarification. I saw somewhere in the email, they made mention of a cost to have this concrete work done. Is it not on the, on the right-of-way or is it on their property or what?
It is not on the right-of-way. That's the reason for the easement, um, so that we can make the repair, and then they would be, the, the homeowner would be responsible for the concrete work since it is their driveway.
Okay.
We, we would be, we would be, um, installing the new pipe, um, and making sure that it's installed correctly, and then they will be responsible for the driveway. And she is, she is aware of that. She is aware that the driveway will be their responsibility.
Okay, so, uh, on, on that particular thing, um, now you all help me out, those of you who have been around for a while, Jimmy, you and, and Mr. Mullins and Ms., um, Walden. When, in, in the past, when we had issues with driveways and we, we came and put the pipe in and where, where it was not city property, did we, uh, did we not charge the cost to the customer? And then I noticed that Hank said something about because it's going to be a policy, that it doesn't have to be approved by council, but I thought that's what councils do, is set policy. So help me understand that. I saw that on the email, that if, if, if it's going to be a policy, then council doesn't have to approve it? Is that what I read?
Uh, I don't know that I, I apologize. I, I did not read that. I think any, uh, any policy associated with our stormwater system would have to be approved by, uh, council. Uh-
Well, this, this, excuse me, Jimmy. I'm gonna read to you what the email said.
That, you, 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 you're right, Ms. Shinholster. That is what I said.
Yeah, and, and, and he said that since this will be a policy, I don't believe that council will need, uh, a form of vote to approve it, but I thought that's the, that was one of the things that we do, is set policy.
Yeah, I would, I would, uh, I haven't pulled that up, but I, I would agree with you, Ms. Shinholster, that, uh, that the, the, once a policy is set, and I'm not, I'm not including this particular situation in that. That's why we have a resolution for an easement and so forth. This, this, as I understand it, is an emergency situation resulting from, uh, our stormwater creating an issue at this driveway where, where these folks, these homeowners cannot even-
Right.
...traverse the driveway. Okay? That's, that's this situation as I see it. Uh, going forward, I think that council would have to approve the policy, okay?
Right.
And at that point, approving the policy, then it would be up to the city manager and Public Works and so forth to administer that policy. We, we wouldn't need to come back to council every time that we have this situation, once the policy, uh, uh, is in place. Now, if it involves an easement situation, okay? Those, those would always have to come back to council, uh-
Right.
-lest they are, you know, we, in the past, we have not done temporary construction easements that way, uh, because they don't, they're not, they're not permanent. Uh, they're only for the time period that the work is being done. But typically, where we have a permanent easement, just like any other kind of conveyance to the city, uh, before it is, before it is of legal force and effect, it has to be accepted by the governing body. And so even going forward, where there are permanent easements involved, that, that would require-
Yeah.
-the mayor and council. But the policy itself, once you adopt that policy, then obviously the city folks, the city manager, Public Works, whoever, will be able to operate within that policy without coming back to, to council every time.
Right, and that, that's the reason why I said that, after, because after I read that.
Okay.
I, I understand the emergency situation with the easement, but I just wanted to say that because the Hank, the reason why we, we set the policy is basically to protect you all, because if someone decides to come back and say, well, you had no right to do this, and then what policy are you going by, or what's the city's policy on this particular thing? It's something that we do to protect you all when you all are out there having to do this work, that, that we have a policy established to cover you to, to be able to go for, forward and do it without coming back every time. So when I read that, I knew that that was something that we needed to talk about.
And I'm, I'm glad you brought it up because I completely mistyped there, but the point that Jimmy made was in terms of having to come back to y'all with, with permission for that each time was what was the point that I was making, but you're, you're exactly right, and, and we, you know me, I'm all about having some written policy, and, and this is the beginning of working through that process, and I'm glad that we're having this discussion.
Right. Right.
So what I will, what I will plan to do is bring you all a formal policy, uh, for other situations where pipes are replaced within the right-of-way, uh, and then-
Okay.
-the, the homeowner or the property owner will be responsible for replacing the concrete in their driveway once we replace the pipe, if it's in the right-of-way. If it's not in the right-of-way, then obviously that'll come to, back to y'all for an easement request again.
Okay.
And, and like I, let me reiterate too, Ms. Shinholster, typically, we do not, uh, come to council with construction easements, uh, just simply because they are, you know, that just allows us to get on the homeowner's property or the property owner's property, uh, outside of the, outside of the right-of-way or the easement area to do the work. Uh, and once the work is done, then that easement is no longer, uh, in force or effect. Uh, and so that, in the past, we have not done that because it's just, it has no permanency. It's only to, it's only to facilitate, uh, our folks to be able to do the work, uh, without somebody claiming that we're on their, we're on their property without having the proper authority to be on their property.
Mr. Steve, trying to get in. Uh, Mr. Steve, I know you've been trying to get in. Go ahead, maybe you can.
Hank answered my question. I wanted to know what we're going to discuss, trying to set policy on this. It's, it's been an unwritten policy for too many years, and, and-
Right.
And, and before that, it was kind of a pick-and-choose policy, and, uh, like too much was at that point in time, and I just, it, it needs to be one way or the other. And, uh, I, I, nothing here takes me more in this position than me being confused about what we're doing. And when you have written policy and you have it approved, then everybody knows what's going on. And it's a lot easier to pay that information to constituents, and let's, let's not let this particular situation, uh, just hold us off and, and think that we got everything done. We need to immediately get on to this policy.
We'll have a, we'll have a resolution for that policy on the 13th, October 13th meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chambers, uh, Mr. Griffin and I was talking in reference to that this morning as, that, you know, we need to make sure we're updating these policies. We can't go on word-of-mouth from 35 years ago or a handshake. We need to make sure we have something to present to, uh, our constituents, and, and that was another reason why I wanted to go ahead and get the committees in place. I, I think I asked a couple of weeks ago about that, and, uh, if you don't want to serve, let me know. Uh, we're gonna try to go ahead and work that in and try to hopefully have that for the next meeting. Mr. Mullins, were you trying to say something? I think I saw your name pop up, pop up a couple of times.
Yeah, 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 just one quick question. Uh, do we have to get approval if, if they have a lien holder on the property?
Uh, that's, that's a very good question. Uh, we have not necessarily, uh, done that in the past. GDOT, uh, has, um, not typically done that strictly for, you know, a, a 20-foot easement. Um, what that does is, uh, if we, if we continue that policy of not, um, getting the lien holder, you know, not doing the title work, not doing the lien holder, what that means is that, uh, if, if that property were to, uh, you know, to go into some kind of foreclosure, okay, where, where the lien holder has to step in, uh, our, our easement is not going to be valid against that lien holder. Okay? And if the house, if the property gets sold, uh, the lien is, is still, is still valid. Uh, but on any, on any major project, and we can do it on this one, on any major project, uh, before we began work, we would have a title, a search done, okay? So we know exactly who the owner is and, and what we are dealing with in that regard. Um, I'll defer to, in this situation, to, to Mr. Thomas and to, uh, the city manager relative to the urgency. You know, my understanding is this, this is a situation where we've got a property owner that can't get in and out of their, you know, their driveway, and, uh, that something needs to be done, uh, immediately. And quite honestly, that doesn't prevent us from, from coming back and, and getting that done, but it does, you know, if, if the lien holder refused to give us the easement or to release their lien as to our easement area, then yeah, that, that could mean that if there was some action taken by the lien holder, you know, as in a foreclosure, that, um, that our lien would no longer, our easement would no longer be, uh, of any force and effect. So that, that is a consideration. Now, when we, when we have done these larger projects where we're, where we're acquiring right-of-way and so forth along, um, you know, stretches of road, assisting GDOT or, uh, GDOT making it a requirement for us to obtain the right-of-ways in order for them to do the work, then we, we do make sure that title work done and, uh, that we have, uh, contact of and so forth. So that's a good question. Yeah. All right.
Let me ask, if you're not speaking, mute your phones because we're getting a lot of background feedback. If you're not speaking, please mute your phone, and I think we can see your names pop up, um, if you're trying to get in. Ms. Shinholster, are you trying to state something? I see your name popping up.
No, I didn't say anything. Just mispronounced.
Okay.
What, like?
And I think, Ms. Lane, ask the question too, Mr. Jordan, because most time, if a property owner is doing some type of work on their home, um, and if they're gonna file their homeowner's insurance, I think the homeowner's insurance is gonna require anyway, um, major, um, Mr. Richardson properties like that anyway, it's gonna require them to, to list the person that's doing the work, and that would list us as well, wouldn't it, as a, uh, lien holder?
Well, we're, we're actually not, if we get this permanent easement from the property owner, uh, we're, we're not a lien holder in the traditional sense of a mortgage company, uh, somebody that has a judgment against the property, uh, but typically, we're talking about a mortgage company. Uh, the easement, a, a lien is, is technically not a, uh, an ownership interest, um-
You're talking more about a mechanic lien?
A mortgage, um, a mortgage is an ownership, is an ownership interest. Uh, our easement is, um, is a property interest, uh, to the extent that, you know, it can be an exclusive easement, it can be a non-exclusive easement, um, but it is a property interest that, uh, that we have, um, on somebody else's property. There are already, uh, throughout this subdivision, and as, uh, the city manager has provided to you guys, probably haven't had a chance to look at it, but throughout this subdivision, uh, there are drainage easements. Uh, unfortunately, a lot of times when these drainage easements are platted, uh, they're not always platted where, where the drainage is, where the, where the issues are. And, uh, and so, a lot of times, we are operating within those drainage easements, which we have a right to do, or within our right-of-way. As Tim mentioned, part of this, uh, in this cul-de-sac probably, uh, is within our right-of-way. It's just not 100% within our right-of-way, and that's why, uh, we need the, we need the easement.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
The only thing I would add, Mayor, is, is as Mr. Jordan mentioned, this, this is a, a, an emergency situation. The folks cannot get their car out of their house, out of their garage, out of their driveway until this repair is made, so, um, I, I don't know if we want to have discussion on this easement about the lien holder, or look at coming back and adding them later. Mr. Jordan, I'll just yield to you on what we need to do with that.
Yeah, I think we need to, in this situation, I understand, we need to go ahead, and if we can get this easement, uh, and can get this work done, then that's what we need to, uh, to do. And I'll have somebody, uh, we'll run a title search on it, and, uh, if we need to make contact with anyone else, uh, relative to this particular piece of property, we'll. But, uh, as of, right now, I think, even, even from, without getting into detail with this, even from a liability standpoint, we are probably, uh, smart to go ahead and get this easement done and get it, uh, approved by the property owner so that we can start this work.
And Mr. Thomas just sent a message to everybody that the property is out of water service as well.
Yes. Uh, but that, that cannot be, and that's actually the line between the meter and the house. Um, so if, if we follow our verbal means, then, uh, she will be responsible for replacing the water line- then she will be responsible for replacing the water line between the meter and the house.
What caused it?
The, the collapse, the concrete, the, the pipe and concrete collapse. It took out the water line and also the natural gas line.
Ooh, oh, wow.
You know, I, I, one thing that concerns me while we're still discussing this situation, and I don't want to, to jump out there too much because I don't want to get into a legality situation. But, um, I'm, I'm having to think about the amount of time we have been contacted about this. And, um, you know, when, when we do get around to it, then a collapse happens. And I'm just a little concerned there about this particular situation, especially what you've just now mentioned. I think that is, that is almost, I don't, I don't want Mr. Jordan to jump on me without saying too much.
I was, I was just about to mute you, so. But I couldn't figure out how.
We were not actually contacted about it until the collapse occurred. That, that, we were not actually contacted about it until the collapse occurred.
I thought this was the same situation that we had been contacted about.
No, no, that, the, the other situation that I think you're thinking about in that neighborhood is actually on Cords Bridge Road.
Oh, okay. I apologize then. I thought this was the same situation. Okay.
That, the one on Cords, the, the one on Cords Bridge Road is 100% in the right of way. So we will not need an easement to take care of that one.
Right.
We will, we will need the policy approved by you all though to ask that property owner to replace the concrete. So we will deal with that one after we take up the policy question on the 13th.
Is there a way, uh, right now, we have a window, just looking at weather, of probably a week to, maybe a week and a half, it looks like sunshine. And, and I think we, you know, we need to get at it. Is, is there a way to be able to temporarily get the car out? And just not, not to be able to get it past, you'd have to haul dirt in and all that, and then bring it back out, or?
I did not see a way.
They actually can't exit at all.
Say again, Tim?
They can't, they can't get out at all.
That, that's, that's what I was about to say. When I was out there yesterday morning with, with Mr. Thomas, I did not see a way, even coming through neighbor's yards, for them to be able to get out, so.
Okay.
Hank, the repair, actually, we could have that pipe in in, in a day and had them pass on that same day.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna pack dirt over the pipe, so they'll actually be able to get over that surface even before the concrete is replaced, correct?
Okay.
Is there a quick crush and run?
Right.
Right, okay. That sounds good. There, it's not only waiting on a conflict, and I guess is what, what I was concerned about.
And the natural gas line was actually replaced, um, yesterday. And we will be, you know, we will share with them that, that it is their responsibility to replace the water line unless you all want to approve the replacement of that as part of this project.
Mr. Griffin, you, do you have anything else? Are we?
I don't, no ma'am. Okay. Bo, Bo has the resolution, Mayor, that he'll need to read before the vote's done, at least by caption. I, I do want, I mean, this, I, my, do we have a general opinion as to whether we want to be the one to replace the water line as well, or not?
I should hope that if I am ever in a situation as this resident, that I, I, I would be extended the courtesy to have that line reconnected if it were part of a greater calamity and not, uh, an individual incident regarding the water line. Well, I would be in favor of us going ahead and taking care of that for this customer. I think it's important that we do everything that we can to try to make this a, a good customer service experience with the city.
I have to agree, and especially in light of the situation, that they are homebound. And I don't, I don't know that there's, you know, that they don't need this on top of it. We could go in and have it done, uh, you know, as quick as these guys are. That the things that they do around the city, they can have it done by probably this afternoon.
Well, we would not actually be able to replace the water line until the pipe is replaced.
Right.
Okay, Tim, you on your way?
Hank?
Yes.
We will have to remove the, the existing pipe, and I think the water line is under that pipe. So we, we will have to have the water line repaired first and then start our installation.
What, but the, the water line could, would have to be repaired after the pipe is pulled out though, correct?
No, sir. Yeah, after the pipe is pulled out, that's correct.
So what we'll do is we'll have utility maintenance on site with you. So when the pipe is removed, they can make that repair, and then you can put the new drain pipe in.
Yeah, I think they, they working together on it.
Right.
All right. Do we have a resolution number on, on, on this, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am, we do. It's resolution R. 2010-42.
I'm sorry, you kind of broke up for me.
Resolution number R. 2010-42.
Okay, we do a discussion on that and, um, okay, so at this time, I'm gonna ask the clerk to please read the resolution presented, R-20010-42.
Uh, it's resolution R. 2010-42. Resolution to authorize Mayor Mary Parham Copeland, on behalf of the City of Milledgeville, to accept an easement conveyance from Ling Wan and Jang Wei Kiu for purposes of repairing and maintaining drainage and stormwater infrastructure located at 106 Coventry Court, Milledgeville, Georgia.
All right, council, you've heard the resolution presented, unless you're pleased on it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Second, Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, thank you.
Close out on that. I think everybody was pretty much okay with the water situation. Didn't hear from everybody. I heard one or two, and that was Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Chambers. I just want to make sure everybody's voice was heard there.
I'm fine with it. It's okay.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Ms. Shinholster, Ms. Dr. Lee?
Oh, yeah, I'm good. It's good. Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So at this time, um, call the room, Mr. Dunne, sir, please.
Okay. Dr. Lee? Mrs. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Griffin, at this time, do you have anything else we need to, before we close out this?
No, ma'am, I do not. Thank you.
All right. I need a motion and a second for us to adjourn the meeting.
I move.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great.
Thank you.